Thank you guys very much. Now, this is the, let's see, what's the name of the trio?
Marshals Company.
Marshals Company, and you guys will be performing at the Charlie Christian Jazz Festival coming up, and we're gonna learn more about that event, but thank you so much for serenading us this morning with the music. Yeah, we really appreciate it. One more round of applause. We're gonna get started with the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor Randy McGuire is here from the Lakeside United Methodist Church with his thunder tie, neatly tied around his neck this morning. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman Stonecifer if he'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, but would everyone please stand at this point?
Let us pray. Creator and always creating God, I thank you for the caring and insightful council members gathered here today. We all thank you for your abundant blessings and for your, for life itself. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of taking responsibilities to govern the great city of Oklahoma City. We also thank you for the freedom we have in this great country and for the men and women who have fought and died to protect the freedom to govern ourselves and to worship you. And I thank you, God, for loving us through our good times and our not-so-good times. We understand through your word that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities and that those authorities must promote peace, order, and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular for this assembled city council and its members. I ask that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times. Grant them an understanding of the true needs of our people, a desire for justice, confidence to do what is good and needed by the people, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. I pray that you grant them personal peace for their lives and a joy for the task ahead, and the knowledge that the power behind us is greater than any problem before us. I pray for the agenda set before them today. I pray for those receiving honors and for those that are here to share insights. May all that is done here please you and benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved Oklahoma City. I pray this in the name of our God who is still creating this city and the world. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Looking for Anita Arnold. Where is she hiding this morning? Yeah, Anita, come on up. We are just around the corner from one of the highlights of Oklahoma City's annual music schedule, and that is the beginning of the Charlie Christian Music Festival, and Anita Arnold has been helping to run this event for so many years. And Anita, we have a proclamation that we'll get to in a moment. Let's have the clerk go ahead and read that, and we'll get settled here.
Whereas the Black Liberated Arts Center now in its 46th year was organized to showcase the cultures of African-Americans and has brought to our city and our state the best in fine arts and arts education experiences to help develop the artistic talents and teaching abilities of Oklahomans. Whereas the Black Liberated Arts Center has produced the annual Charlie Christian International Music Festival in Oklahoma City for the education and enrichment of all people for 31 years. The Black Liberated Arts Center recognizes the contributions of many Oklahoman musicians to the field of music through the Charlie Christian International Music Festival to be held June 2nd through 5th, 2016. Whereas the Black Liberated Arts Center will celebrate Charlie Christian's centennial birthday during the 100th anniversary celebration of music, music workshops, and special recognition programs during the 31st Annual Charlie Christian International Music Festival. Whereas the Black Liberated Arts Center has brought a measurable recognition to Oklahoma City through the Charlie Christian International Music Festival and has established the festival as an international attraction for Oklahoma City as the sponsoring organization of the event and recipient of the Jazz at Lincoln Center's Hall of Fame Award posthumously for Charlie Christian. Now therefore Mick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim June 2nd through 5th as Charlie Christian International Music Festival Week in Oklahoma City, and he encourages all citizens to take this opportunity to experience the musical artistry of the festival and commend the Black Liberated Arts Center for their service in this community.
Let's hear it for the Charlie Christian International Music Festival. Let's say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have with us Paige Smiley. She is with the Deep Deuce Business Association, and this year Black Incorporated is collaborating with the Deep Deuce Business Association to present the festival this year. It's a wonderful collaboration. I want everybody to know that, and Paige is going to distribute something else. I'd also like to thank the city very much for being supportive of Black Liberated Arts Center and this music festival over the years, and we're just pleased that the festival is recognized in every major country, in every major language around the world. That's what Oklahoma City does. Thank you.
That's right.
And this is, and this is our wonderful poster that you'll be seeing in various places.
Okay, and Charlie Christian, born 100 years ago and grew up in Oklahoma City, largely connected with the electric guitar, really the first one to kind of use it, write for it, play it, some would say even invented the way the electric guitar is used today, and for that, he is known internationally in, in, in anyone who studies musical history. And because he grew up playing in Deep Deuce in downtown Oklahoma City, we have this festival named in his honors. The Charlie Christian International Music Festival, and Anita Arnold, we are in your debt and gratitude, and it's great to see Deep Deuce and the homeowners in Deep Deuce coming forward to be a part of it. There'll be music all over downtown Oklahoma City, June 2nd through the 5th, so I do hope everyone will take part in that.
And the outdoor festival location, June 3rd through the 5th, is the vacant lot right across from the downtown YMCA, between Northwest 3rd and 4th and Broadway.
All right. Let's show our appreciation one more time. Here you go, Paige. And yeah, Paige, great, you wanna hand those out? Yeah, feel free to hand them out to the council there. Well, recently, our city received a wonderful word that the Putnam City West Boys Basketball Team had won the state 6A championship, and they are here with us today. Come on forward, guys, and bring your coaches with you. This is when I feel short. This, this is an amazing collection of young men. Councilman James Greiner, a graduate of Putnam City West, and Larry, I think you had daughters that went through Putnam City West, didn't you?
In fact, yes, one of them was on the state championship 6A girls' basketball team when they were playing three-on-three.
That started it all. Why don't you guys come on over here to the center. We have a resolution, I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas Putnam City West High School beat Norman North 67 to 66 to claim the Class 6A State Basketball Championship. Whereas Coach Lenny Burke guided the 2015-16 Patriots to a 24-5 record and their first-ever boys' basketball championship. Whereas Chris Potts was named the Oklahomans' Class 6A Tournament Most Valuable Player. Whereas Potts was joined by Marcus Johnson on the Oklahomans' 6A All-Tournament Team. Whereas Putnam City West reached the championship game by defeating previously undefeated Edmond North 81 to 60 and Tulsa Union 50 to 46. Whereas the coaches and young men on the Putnam City West High School Basketball Team have represented Oklahoma City with honor through hard work, big dreams, and perseverance. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby congratulate Putnam City West High School on winning the Class 6A State Basketball Championship.
And we will need a motion and have to vote on this, guys, so hang on here just a second. It's not official. All right, cast your votes. Everybody turn around, see if they get any green lights. Oh, it's unanimous. Okay, now you can show your appreciation. Here's Coach Lenny Burke.
First of all, it's an honor and humbling experience to be here and just the whole process of winning a state championship. We didn't, we did not know that it was gonna be to encounter going to the state capitol, having to visit Mayor Mick Cornet, and I was telling him a story about how I grew up watching Mayor Cornet on, when he was a sports analyst, and just knowing I was, I was always a fan. Well, I mean, I know, I'm blessed. Thank you though. But I, I just, that is just, I was, I was always been a fan of you, and the things that you've done for Oklahoma City, leaving, going back to DC, lived there for three years, coming back, and it's like everything just changed and grew overnight, and thank you for that. Thank you for inviting us here. Look around, how things come full circle. Ward 7, John Pettis, he holds on the board with my wife, Ralph Ellison. Alumni Greiner, Councilman Greiner, his brother served on our staff for four years, so me and him, pretty much, we, we were the first two coaches there together, so we did four years together, and now he's on to another career. But I wanna thank my coaching staff, Roy Wykoff, I also wanna thank my assistant coach, Jesse Brown, and I just wanna introduce each and every one of the players. First, let me start with my younger guys. Shelby Sampleton, freshman, Antoine Brown, Artavious Washington, Zephaniah Smith, DK Stevenson, Greg Thomas, and then my starters this year, juniors, Peyton Bradley, the sixth man, starter, Nick Robinson, three-year starter, he's a junior, number-one receiver in the state right now, so we, has about 23 offers, so that's, I think that deserves applause right there. Jaren Jackson, who had the winning bucket, had the last five points of the game, I think that deserves applause as well. Chris Potts, who was the MVP of the game, actually, another applause. And then my, then my two lone seniors, Isaac Liggins, who's the master of ceremony and our pastor on the team, Little TD Jakes, he's, he's been on varsity for four years, and Marquise Johnson, who was, come on up, step forward. He's very humble and modest, he's about 5'6" probably, I listed him as 5'9", but he's our all-time, I do, but he, he plays like he's about 6'3", 6'4". All-time leading scorer, four-year starter, broke every record, points and assists in Putnam City West history, so I mean, just... And both of my two seniors are qualifiers, ACT and over 3.0 GPA, and they will further their career together. Actually, both of them are attending U. Full Ride scholarships in central Oklahoma, so we're, we're blessed for that, and they will further on. So we'll return 12 of our 14 guys next year, so we're gonna hopefully not just get a state championship, but I'm thinking national championship. And I wanna thank my A.D. Les Swawski as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Coach. Makes you feel better about the future of our country, doesn't it, when you see young men like that? All right, this is Public Works Week, and we have four members of our Public Works Department here. Come on forward, maybe five. We have a proclamation, I'll ask the clerk to read it as we get settled up front.
Whereas public works, infrastructure, facilities, and services are of vital importance to sustainable communities and to the health, safety, and well-being of the people of Oklahoma City. Whereas such facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees from state and local units of government and the private sector who are responsible for and must plan, design, build, operate, and maintain the transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential to serve our citizens. Whereas it is in the public interest for all citizens across the nation to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and related programs in their respective communities. The year 2016 marks the 56th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now therefore Mick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim May 15th through 21st as Public Works Week in Oklahoma City, and he urges all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life.
Let's show our appreciation. When you consider all that this department has to look after, every street, every public building that involves the city of Oklahoma City, our complete water supply, you can see it, it's just these and, and hundreds more that represent Oklahoma City and, and keep us safe and, and keep our streets in, in working order. So with that, I'm gonna allow our Public Works Department Director Eric Ringer to take over.
Thank you, Mayor. I think when we, when we talk about public works, and we do have representatives of the department here, there's actually a number of departments that complete public work. So with the city of Oklahoma City, we have our Department of Public Works, there's utilities, we also have our Parks Department, and then last but not least, also our Building Management Department, all who provide public service daily to the citizens of Oklahoma City. With us today, we also have other representatives from, from the state and from APWA, so I thought I might just give a minute just to Paul DeAndre, who's the president of the APWA.
Thank you. Yes, American Public Works Association is an association made up of public works staff from all around the state and the nation. We, our main focus is to have weeks like this where we promote the plight of public works directors and, and staff. They're often the unsung heroes in a city. I mean, most of the time, they never hear anything about what they've done unless something goes horribly wrong and someone calls, so we just like to take this one week out of the year to let them know how much we appreciate them. And on behalf of APWA, we definitely wanna extend our appreciation to the city of Oklahoma City Public Works Department.
Thank you. Let's show our appreciation again. Thanks very much. Thank you. Thanks very much. Thanks for coming. We're on item four of the council agenda, and item four is the Journal of Council Proceedings. Four A is to receive the journal for May 3rd and 10th, and four B is to approve the journal for April 26th. Is there a motion? Any comments or questions on the journal? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And item five's request for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, outside of the item 9A2 that's listed, I have several others, starting on page 19 under item 9H1. 9H1 on page 19, item G, 9913 Southridge Drive, west of that be stricken, the owner secured. Item J, 1312 Northwest 14th Street, west of that be stricken, the owner has secured. Item N, 1301 Northwest 16th Street, west of that be stricken, the owner has secured. Item N, 104 Southeast 19th Street, west of that be stricken, the owner has secured. Moving to page 20, item Q, 543 Southwest 30th Street, west of that be stricken, the owner has secured. Item R, 3400 Northwest 30th Street, west of that be stricken, the owner has secured. And item S, 2209 Southwest 38th Street, west of that be stricken, again, the owner has secured. Moving to item 9I1. Item L, 1312 Northwest 14th Street, west of that be stricken, the owner has secured. Item P, 3400 Northwest 30th Street, west of that be stricken, the owner has secured. And item Q, 2209 Southwest 38th Street, west of that be stricken, the owner has secured. And then moving on to page 22, settlement of a lawsuit listed as item 9L1, page 22. The previously, the previously agreed upon terms, one of the plaintiffs requested a change, therefore we ask that that item be stricken, and we anticipate submitting a revised settlement negotiation on May 31st.
All right, any other requests for uncontested continuances? Item six is revocable permits. We'll start with item 6A. It's an event to be held in Ward 2. Is anyone here representing Kathy's on Paseo? Yeah, come on forward. Good morning, and we'll need your name and address for the record, please.
Tom Jacobson, 301 Northwest 19th Street, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma.
All right, tell us about Kathy's on Paseo, Tom.
Well, it's our 15th year to do the Kathy's Market on Paseo, and we're gonna have approximately 85 to 90 vendors there with 100, about 120 different tents. Some of them take more than one booth space because they have such large items that they're Kathy is not here because she passed away in November of last year, so we are dedicating this festival and future festivals in her memory. And that's basically how we're gonna be setting up, so we hope that everyone that is here will have a chance to come by and visit with us. I think you'll enjoy it.
It's always fun. Ed, you wanna make the motion here?
Yeah, and this is over, tell us the dates again, Memorial Day weekend?
Memorial Weekend, yes.
So which days of, of the weekend?
It's gonna be May 28th, 29th, and 30th. Saturday, Sunday, Monday.
Thank you. Move for approval.
All right, is there a second? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Item 6B is a request from Ultimax Sports to hold the Myriad Gardens Father's Day 5K. Is anyone here representing that event? Come on forward.
Morning, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm John Oslund, at 2300 Brookside Avenue in Edmond, Oklahoma. Very pleased to be appearing for the Myriad Botanical Gardens. This is their second year to hold the Father's Day 5K. It'll be 7:30 in the morning on Sunday, the 19th of June for Father's Day. We'll close down the north, share it in the north side of the Myriad Gardens for a short duration that morning, and run up Hudson into beautiful Heritage Hills. 5K celebrates Dad and a fun mile run through the Myriad Botanical Gardens for the kids. We invite all of you guys to come out and run, share the day with Dad.
Sounds like great fun. It's in Ward 6, Meg. All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
All right, we'll recess the council meeting, convene as Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There are five items today. All right, comments or questions on the MFA? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC MFA, convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. Is there a motion here?
All right, we have a motion in a second, and Jane Abraham's gonna give us a presentation
on item C. Apparently we have another horse and rider available at the Land Run Sculptures on the
We do, thank you, Mayor. This is kind of exciting. It marks the 38th sculpture of the first 38 that we had a contract for, for the Centennial Land Run Monument, so it's very, very exciting. I'm Jane Abraham with City Manager's Office, and I'm just gonna run through this quickly to just kind of update everyone on where we are, kind of give a brief background of So this shows the east side of the canal, and that's where the largest grouping of sculptures is complete. And just to give a little bit of background on the project, it was jointly funded with federal, state, and city funds. The whole work has been sculpted by a single artist, Paul Moore, who is a fellow of the National Sculpture Society and a member of the Cowboy Artists of America. And as of May 10th, 38 of the 38 sculptures have been installed, so we've reached kind of a significant milestone with the sculptures. The contract for the seven deferred sculptures was approved by council in 2013, and he has started on those sculptures, so he's got four in production right now. So this is one of the most recent installations that was put in last winter, and it's a horse that's falling down right behind one of the major wagon sculptures. There's a trunk that's falling out of that wagon, and he tripped over it and is falling down, so it's really one of the more, I guess, active pieces.
It's dramatic, yeah. It's, it's really impressive when you get up close and look at it.
So it's, it's pretty, pretty amazing in terms of telling the story of just the chaos of the, of the land run. So the Sooner and his horse, they're at the end of the turnaround, and they were installed last summer, and then the horse and rider falling down was installed in January, and then the one in May. So that there's four sculptures in production, which will be, so three horse and rider elements, and then there'll be a second soldier located up near the other soldier by the cannon. And that's the lighting, I couldn't get very good lighting on my pictures, I apologize. This is the Sooner and his horse that are at the end of the turnaround. And this is number six, the last one that was just installed, so it's the third, kind of in the first three that's kind of have the, that are at the start of the overall line of the, of the work. And they're installed on the west side of the canal. Already mentioned that, and so that's where the second soldier will go, up by the first soldier in the cannon. And then this just, I was able to catch a canal boat coming through the middle of it, so that's kind of what it looks like today. That's it.
All right, Jane, thank you.
Jane, is there a chance for any additional signage? You know, now that the Whitewater Rapids and things are open, there's so many people going down along Reno, and it's hard to understand exactly where it is from that venue point.
I know we placed additional, an additional sign sort of further down right before where they could, people can turn in at the, at the Bass Pro Shop entrance. And so there's a couple of different places, but I think as, yeah, it's, it is kind of hard to get back to from Reno.
We'd be happy to review that and see, see if there's something that needs to be needed. The mayor's also asked that we take a look at making sure there's good pedestrian signage from the Bricktown area down to the River Rapids area, and so we, we can blend that together and, and as we're looking.
I mean, I've done it a lot, and I even get a little confused about where to go in to go across and then go into the bridge. And I even get a little confused about where to go in to go across and then go into the bridge. I think.
All right, Jane, thank you.
All right.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any other comments or questions on the PPA? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC PPA. Convene is the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. Just the claims and payroll today. All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCEAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket. All right, we have a motion in a second. Pete, which one would you like to talk about?
I'd like LX, AV, and I'd like to vote double B separately.
Double B?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Larry?
Item O.
Okay. Ed?
And I would like to vote on AR and BA separately.
AR and?
BA.
BA. All right, I'm about over here. All right, Pete, go ahead and jump in on item X. Or whichever one you want to talk about first.
Let me. L, I just want to comment on that. That's, this has been a long time coming. It started when Meg represented this part of Oklahoma City. It's been needed for a long, long time. It's been a flooding drainage problem. And I'm glad to see it move this direction. I hear about it often when I go to meetings of that area. And we've done some work down there previously. But fortunately, we're getting ready to move forward with amending the contract to really get after it. So I just appreciate the fact and wanted to point it out. The other one. X. X is, I just want to point it out to thank the two people that contributed right away easements. You know, so often when we widen or work on roads, the people that live next to them benefit financially very greatly by it. And in addition to that, we pay them for the, for, and this is a church and a business there along Choctaw Road. And both of them donated easements. I know the church can use the money, and most businesses probably could too. But I think it's just a very good community effort to see people donate those easements. And I just wanted to let people know I appreciate that. The other one is the, is AV. And AV is the agreement between I-89 and Oklahoma City to move forward with the Wellness Center at Cap Hill High School. That's, it's been, it shouldn't have taken this long. And to that extent, I'm sorry that it delayed everything. On the other hand, if anybody kept up with what happened at the school board last night and looked at the problems they have and the size of the cuts they're making in relation to their budget, it's easy to understand why a conversation about a parking lot wouldn't be on the top of their list. But we got it done in time that we don't have to rebid it. And I appreciate the hard work that it took to make it all happen. But that's it.
Okay. Larry, you wanted to talk about item O?
Yes, this is the final leg, if you will, of the streetscape on Northwest 23rd. It touches three wards, Ward 3, Ward 2, and Ward 6. And the good news is that this is a change order that sets the start date for the project. The construction will start on June 20th of this year. And the contractor will have the adjusted completion date fulfilled, which is October 17th of this year. So the completion of this streetscape is coming right up now. And we're very thankful for all the work that's gone on before it. And we look forward to having it finished by October 17th of this year. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay.
Larry, I was just curious why we had to push the date. Do you know why we had to move the date out a couple of months? Eric, I didn't. It looked like the original completion date was August.
So one of the things that Public Works has exercised is we've worked with our paving contractors with the number of projects that we have is what we call flexible start date. So when we're bidding our projects out, instead of mandating what the start date is, we give them a 60-day window to start. It helps them be more efficient and helps us guarantee those completion dates. So this is a change order that just allows the contractor to change the dates contractually before we start. And then we reestablish the dates just with a no-cost change.
All right, Ed, you wanted to speak on AC2?
This is allocation of $100,000 in unlisted bond funds from the 2007 bond for a project across from the Tower Theater for a mid-block traffic signalized crossing. We met with the applicants, Meg and I did, and the Public Works. Public Works city staff was recommending, rather than do something in the middle of the block to make improvements to the intersection at 23rd and Walker so that everybody, all pedestrians, could enjoy the benefits of. But we, and I don't think you could leave that meeting with the impression that we were in favor of the city paying for it. But my recollection is then we said, well, go to the Traffic Commission and see if they'll approve it. The Traffic Commission barely approved it, 3 to 2, with the Ward 2 commissioner not there, with the understanding that the applicants would bear primary financial responsibility. I'm just reading the minutes. So they approved it 3 to 2, assuming that the applicant would pay for it. Steve Lackmire in the paper the next day indicated that we were going to pay for it. And I asked, you know, where that came from. And he didn't really have a good answer. We, we, my understanding is that somehow we've come to like a 50/50 split. But we don't know yet how much it's going to cost. And we don't have that contract negotiated. So both the, both the cost estimates would take about two weeks to complete. And negotiating the contract would take about two weeks to complete. So I don't think we're quite ready. The only reason, this automatically went on the consent docket because it went through the Bond Advisory Committee. And so then it automatically gets put on the consent docket. So I don't think we're quite ready. And I just ask that we pull it for two weeks. I'm not going to be here in two weeks, so four weeks would be better. But I don't know if that's reasonable. So at least two weeks until we find out exactly how much it's going to cost and how much we're going to pay for it. Our unlisted bond fund is already overdrawn. We need it as a contingency fund for those projects that were listed on the 2007 bond. And I guess I'm not really clear what the process is. Which developers get to just tap the unlisted bond fund from 2007? What that process is, how it's decided if we're going to pay for it, how much we're going to pay? I'm not, that process seems somewhat arbitrary to me. But.
Did I make a couple of comments about that? Because we did have a meeting together to talk with the developer. And my recollection of that meeting is that we talked about a wide range of options that could happen here. Everything from essentially nothing to improving the intersection at Walker to possibly a compromise that might put some flashing lights or something in the mid-block to, all the way up to a mid-block crossing. Now, the situation that we have is that we have a theater venue that's been renovated that will hold somewhere between 1,200 to 1,500 people. We have a curb cut at a mid-block crossing. And we have the designated parking for the venue across the street from that curb cut. So as much as we talked and as much as we might like people to walk down to the end of the block, I think that's not going to happen. I truly believe people are going to walk across the street. And when we discussed those options with staff, I think staff was leaning toward the signalization as being the safest. But his flashing lights weren't safe enough for pedestrians. And we did have a conversation, Ed, to my recollection, that talked about splitting the cost 50/50. I think the estimates that we had were $150,000 maybe that the city might consider doing half and that the developer would consider doing half. That is the type of arrangement that we've made on lots of other projects. We're talking about doing it with parking in the Plaza District. We did it with the Quiet Zone. We have a sidewalk program that's a 50/50 split between neighborhoods and the city. And it's a model that we've used for lots of other options. We did recommend that they go to the Traffic Commission. And they did go to Traffic Commission. And the Traffic Commission approved the signalization at the mid-block crossing. So my opinion is, you know, it did go on the agenda because it is routine to do so after a bond meeting. It will come out of unlisted bond funds. But I noted that two agenda items, I think, ahead of, or further on the agenda than this one, 7AE is $874,000 in surplus funds being transferred into the traffic lighting system. So we do have available funding to do this project. We don't have a contract negotiated yet, so we don't have the firm cost. But we can do that in two weeks. So I'm not completely sure why we need to defer. And I think most of the details are worked out. Up to you, but.
Could we make some clarification language up to $100,000 and add the language of a 50/50 split and move it forward today?
Well, if we're thinking it costs $150,000 total, our 50/50 would be $75,000. I'm not sure why we would allocate $100.
Well, what if it comes in at $200,000?
Yeah, it's on third at this point. This is the, there's five steps in this process. This is the third of the steps. It went to the Bond Advisory Board. It went to the Traffic Commission. It will come here for the transfer of the funds. We will have an agreement with the developer that will come back in a couple of weeks. And then finally, there'll be a construction award at some point. We'll have a firm cost, and we'll know. I anticipate that the agreement with the property owner will designate a 50/50 split because that's my understanding of what was talked about. And then, so there's, this is the third of the five steps.
I guess one thing that's a little bit, you talked about 50/50 splits. And I agree, we've done that on other things. But we're talking about unlisted bond funds from the 2007 bond, not the Quiet Zone and things like that. I mean, the only times I can remember is we took $1 million for Grand Boulevard so that Aubrey McClendon and Chesapeake could put in a Whole Foods. We took, we did a 50/50 split with Clay Farha on 150th and Rockwell. And we're doing this. I mean, I don't remember any other. But what's happening is, these are all developers who are coming to the city and saying, I've got this special need, and I'd like unlisted bond funds. Where I've been going to neighborhoods for five years, and the neighborhoods say, your Public Works Department says that we don't have enough drainage capacity in our neighborhood, and our neighborhood is flooding. And I have to tell them, well, you have to wait till the next bond. So why is it that we have to tell the neighborhoods over and over and over, you have to wait, you have to wait. We don't have any money for you. But then certain developers are able to come to the city with their need and jump to the head of the line. They weren't placed on the 2007 bond. But they get to skip, and we have a bond next year. We have a 2017 bond coming up. They could be on that. Why is it that people are able to come to us? The city staff recommendation was that we not do this, that we improve 23rd and Walker. The Traffic Commission would not have approved this if they thought it was a 50/50 split. Their recommendation was, yeah, we'll approve it if the developers pay for all of it. But then it, so it gets past them, and then it's presented to us with this 50/50 split. Hey, Jonathan?
Do you mind if I speak on this? I'm the certain developer, Jonathan Dotson, 1220 Northwest 20th Street. Councilman Shadid, thank you for your comments. Because I think we both share kind of a deep passion for trying to figure out how do we improve neighborhoods and the infrastructure there. And I want to be careful that it's not perceived that we're actually jumping to the front of the line. I think we realized when we did our lighting ceremony, just to turn the lights on at the tower, we had over 300 people show up instead of 1,200 or 1,500 like we might show up. And we watched everyone cross mid-block. And there was no signalized lighting. And so what we started doing was we started reaching out to really the retailers along 23rd and started asking them, what are your thoughts? And so what we found was that we needed to think comprehensively about 23rd Street, really from Robinson to Classen, and how do we calm traffic but allow throughput for the traffic to get through in a safe manner and not have congestion? And really, what it came down to was lowering the speed limit, which Traffic Commission also approved at 25. And then this mid-block crosswalk. And so what we proposed when we met was, we didn't have the answer. We just wanted to say, how do we work together? Because we don't, we don't necessarily have the funds for this, but we're willing to try to carve and make this work. And so what we felt like was the city was willing to really work alongside of us to come up with a solution. Now, when we went to the city, we were just talking, or the Traffic Commission, we actually just went with some kind of flashing light, which would have been a cheaper option. And so what was discussed out of the Traffic Commission was flashing lights are not necessarily the best way to stop cars. And so we actually need to come up with some kind of signalized lighting like we have at the Myriad Gardens. And so this was kind of the solution that we felt like was best. We are scraping to find the $75,000 that we have to make, you know, this work. If it's $200,000 or $250,000, we may have to go back and come up with another plan. It's not like we have a bunch of money to do this as well. So I appreciate the city's engagement. What was talked with the Traffic Commission was 50/50 in the conversation. So I don't feel like if this was approved today, this would be disingenuous or it would mislead what the Traffic Commission did approve.
So Jonathan, so if you can't afford more than $75,000, and Eric is saying he needs two weeks to come up with a final cost estimate, do you have a problem with waiting two weeks to make sure it's not more than you can afford?
Well, I think if we made some kind of conditional improvement where we said, you know, the city will allocate up to $75,000, and we will allocate up to $75,000. And then if there is, you know, an overage, then in two weeks, we'll reassess. But if we can get that conditional improvement, then that allows us, you know, our concern is that by mid-June, we think there's going to be a concert. And so the pressure is on us as developers to try to figure out, how do we actually create a safe place for people to cross? Because we know after just one event with a third of the people there, that they're going to cross mid-block. And so pushing forward, we had it delayed with Traffic Commission to try to come up with a better solution. And I think we did do that.
So if you have a, do you think they'll all go through that crosswalk? Or they'll all just come en masse across?
No, because the way the sidewalk lines out and with the curb cut that's already there in the street that's existing, it actually appears to be the natural spot that you're actually supposed to walk.
Okay.
I guess I would just like to ask that we move the process forward. We do have two other places that this can be discussed at the agreement level and otherwise. And if we could just move forward with an agreement that we, and Mark, if you want to set a max of $75,000 and $75,000, I think that would be.
Suggestion, try to help move the process forward.
But I think if we could just move forward so we can get this thing in the works, that would be my recommendation.
Ed, may I ask a question to you? Because I've not studied this and really, quite honestly, hadn't even focused on this particular issue. And I only occasionally go down Northwest 23rd Street just because of the difficulty it presents currently with the number of traffic signals if you're going, say, from Broadway over to Classen Boulevard. Do you have a preference to push this to a corner type of crosswalk versus a mid-street crosswalk? I, I mean, I've been in a lot of walkable cities. I've never seen where a developer builds a surface parking lot, and then they get their own traffic signalization 250 feet from another traffic signal. The end of the parking lot is literally 50 feet away from the intersection. So people can walk through the parking lot 50 feet to the intersection. And you could do improvements on the intersection where all Oklahoma Cityans could enjoy. I've just never seen that as a walkable strategy. I like the idea of mid-block crossings. But when they're 50 feet apart, it just, and that's why city staff recommended against doing this.
Yeah.
And so that's one question is, should you do it in the first place? The second is, who pays for it? But, I mean, I can, I guess I, I don't know. That's my thoughts. I just haven't seen it in any other city.
Yeah.
No, no, I agree. And I guess it's the legalist side of me that's coming out right now to say, can't we just put up signs and say, please cross at the intersections? You know, for people attending these events. Couldn't you direct them to that corner or that corner and not have a mid-street crossing?
Just to speak on that, I think what wasn't brought up and what we, I think the Traffic Commission rightly realized was that the other side of the parking lot, there is no crosswalk to the east. There's actually no signalized light. So they would be walking, you know, it's fun, they would have to walk all the way across the lot and then come over and then come all the way back. And I think when we talked about with the Traffic Commission, that's whenever we realized that actually the mid-block crosswalk made the most sense. And it lines out with where the curb cut was originally put. the most sense. And it lines out with where the curb cut was originally put from the city when they did the median. And so, there is, you know, it is 50, if you park in the corner, you're really close to the stop, or to the Walker and 23rd intersection. If you're on the other side, you are not close.
And the other side is Hudson, Harvey?
Hudson.
Hudson, yes, sir.
But it has a traffic signal, doesn't it?
No.
No, sir.
Oh, okay.
And Eric, please correct me if I'm wrong, Eric, but this is one of the push-button lights, so it's not activated all the time. It would be activated by people walking across the street.
So, if we choose to move forward, what's being recommended is a standard traffic signal so that there's no confusion for drivers or pedestrians on how it works. But it would be a button activated. It would turn red, no different than like the one that was installed mid-block on Sheridan Avenue between Marriott Gardens into the north. We're just finding that those are very common. People understand readily, so the cars do stop. There's not a red flash. It's just a red solid. It'll turn green to let them go.
Okay. Well, what's the recommendation? I mean, do we have?
Part of the consent.
The recommendation is to move the transfer of the funds.
Ed, what's your position on this?
I don't, I could get past putting it. I think they should pay for it. I've been telling neighborhoods, I just don't, I don't know what the total cost of their project is, but an extra $75,000 if they get their own traffic signalized, I just don't understand how they get to tap unlisted bond funds. I do think you're skipping to the front of the line. I do think lots of neighborhoods could have $100,000 worth of drainage put into them and their houses could stop flooding. And so, I just don't understand how developers get to tap these funds, but neighborhoods don't.
Personally, I think it's important that both of the councilors representing this area understand the whole process. And if you're still, if there's still some doubts on your side, I don't see a problem with delaying this decision. That's all I'm saying.
I agree. I've agreed with almost everything Ed said.
I mean, we're not denying it. We're just asking for additional time to get all the relevant information. Let's get the exact cost estimate. Let's get the contract negotiated and signed and come right back in two weeks. It seems like a fair request. I don't see the problem with...
Jim, is that going to slow down the potential construction if it's approved?
Eric, I'm going to answer that.
I think the conversation is accurate. We think we're just a few weeks away from getting the final proposals on what it will cost to put this in. So, I don't think so. I think we can try to target and still meet the June date should the council decide to move forward. Just as a point of clarification, I feel that I need to offer because we're talking a lot about different bond funds, is the different propositions and the different unlisted funds follow those individual propositions. So, what we're talking about today is traffic unlisted funds, which there is a surplus and we've completed like the ITS today under the budget. But you're right, councilman, there are other propositions like the paving, like the drainage that are a little bit stretched on the unlisted funds. And so, we're monitoring those much, much more closely. Not that we don't monitor all closely, but the traffic does have a higher surplus of funds than the other propositions.
Eric, could traffic bond funds be used for drainage project?
They cannot. So, the proposition monies can't move. We can't use traffic on drainage. We can't use drainage on paving. So, I mean, these have to be done on other traffic projects. And we do a lot of partnerships. So, I mean, we're continuing to work on partnerships and grant funds in all wards. So, when we do find opportunities to partner either with grants or developers on signals that are approved by the traffic commission, I mean, we're doing our best to bring those proposals to you for consideration. And so, we'll continue to do so as advised. But again, there's still an agreement pending and we're prepared to move forward.
So, just help me, so if, say, a neighborhood wants a traffic improvement, how, what's the process for tapping unlisted bond funds? How does somebody apply for that?
So, simply making a request to our traffic engineering division that we'd like to place an item on the traffic commission. Really, the very first step for a traffic improvement, whether it be a stop sign or a yield sign or a full signal, is to make that request for approval at the commission level. So, the commissioners really need to approve that going forward. But once it's warranted and approved, we then can start working on an actual project. Now, clearly, a stop sign's a very inexpensive item compared to a full signalization. So, we process those here at the council level pretty regularly. You're seeing new stop sign additions and things. But the signals do take more evaluation and time. I would say each one's individual. In this case, it's not a signal at a full intersection. It's a mid-block. So, the costs are probably relatively half of what we would expect to signalize a full intersection. And that's what we're working on now. But that would be that next step is working out either an agreement or receive direction from the council for us to proceed solely with just using city funds to do an unlisted project and bringing that back through the council for approval.
Okay.
And I guess I do want to just clarify. The last thing is that the recommendation is that this resolution be adopted. It wasn't a denial.
From who?
Well, the memo that we have in our packet is a recommendation to approve, and it was approved by the traffic commission.
Okay. I guess I read a different staff report, but that's fine.
Staff recommendation says approval on the...
Okay.
Okay, so Eric has told us he does not believe the project would be delayed by deferring this item two weeks. Is that what I'm hearing? And is there a motion to defer this item two weeks?
They have to defer it two weeks.
Second.
All right. Would you all like to vote on this item at this time right now? Okay. So, we're going to vote on the deferral, the request is to defer this item two weeks. And that item, the deferral passes six-three. Okay. We have a presentation from Chris Vargas.
Actually, we have a change in plans.
Okay.
Chris is not here this morning, but Teresa Smith is here. And we're here to talk about the home investment partnership program.
All right. And this is item 7F?
H.
H, okay.
Morning, council. I am Teresa Smith. I'm a senior planner in the planning department. And I, is it better? Oh, that is a lot better, isn't it? Okay, so I manage the community housing development organizations.
It's in community development.
So, we have some pretty pictures for you. The community development housing organizations have been around a long time. The home program started in, with HUD, in about 1993. It's officially regulated in 92, but by the time we got our money, it was about 1993. Jefferson Park has been with us through all those years. And they have done a great job in revitalizing their neighborhood, the Jefferson Park Historic District. Today, we're going to talk to you about the proposal that they've made for an area at 1419 through 1425 Northwest 29th Street. This is in the Epworth View addition. It's north of Oklahoma City University. One thing about the home investment partnerships program, 15% of the allocation given to the city or formulated for the city is designated to be spent for community housing development organizations. We call them CHODOs. This just shows you some of their houses that they've done. They've done over 30 houses in their own neighborhood. So, this is their first venture outside of the Jefferson Park So, this is the proposed site. It consists of five 25-foot lots, giving us a frontage of 125 feet, and they're 140 feet deep. The plan is to place six houses in that area. It's about 17,500 square feet, about 3,000 square feet a lot. I will tell you that this proposal does conform with the Plan OKC for housing choices to increase housing choice and diversity for all lifestyles. Small lot development is kind of popular and trendy. It also helps to give a little more density and housing options for people to live closer or within the urban core. It also comports with thriving neighborhoods to help ensure stable, safe, and active and vibrant neighborhoods and efficient development as this is infill development with existing infrastructure. So, this is what the site looks like today. The slot, the slide, the photo at the top is four rental units. It's boarded up and has been for quite some time. In fact, that property was foreclosed upon by Chase Bank, then it went to Mellon Bank, and then our CHODO bought it. The property, the lower slot, the lower photo, is a single bungalow. With the proposal of this, if it's feasible, the CHODO would like to take that bungalow, it's on a traditional foundation, and move it to a lot someplace in that neighborhood. So, now you can see the proposed development, a lovely rendering. This is what it would kind of look like on the street. These parcels are the first residential parcels just west of Classen. So, on the east of this parcel is commercial. It's, I think there's some retail. You know, we know that there is a market for small lot development. You can kind of see this by the brisk sales of some high-end small lot developments in Meadowbrook Acres. In fact, if you went on the AIA Housing Tour, you know, two or three weeks ago, you may have seen those. There's a four-by-four development and a side-by-side. But I will tell you that our public investment in this housing development will be about $70 a square foot, and the houses will sell probably for $90,000 to $120,000. Very different than the housing small lot development in Meadowbrook Acres. We believe that the small lot development is good for everyone, and we would like to see low-income persons have that housing choice. The next is just what it would be like kind of if you were within the development. Directly across the street is a massive parking lot. To the east is retail, and then you have the neighborhood. We think that by building this in a cluster, that actually it will build more community within that neighborhood. And finally, if you have questions or anything, we have our JPNA CHODO director, Pam Bigum, is here. And also, their architects from Common Works, Klaus Reiman, Philip, and Asa Highsmith, if you have questions. We really thank you for your time.
All right. Any questions here? David?
Are there provisions that require that it's an owner-occupied house versus somebody just coming in and purchasing these homes and then renting them out?
Absolutely. It's part of the regulations.
Okay.
We require that they live there a minimum of five years, and we expect that it would be bought by another homeowner instead of someone buying it and renting it out. Just because of the way the cluster housing is, it really does build good community.
All right. Any other comments or questions? All right. Thanks for the presentation.
You're welcome.
Okay. And I believe that's the only other presentation on the consent docket.
It is.
All right. So, here's what I'm going to do. We have a motion on the table for the bulk of the docket. I'm going to have that motion exclude AC2, which we've already deferred, and the three items that the council has asked to be voted on separately, which is AR, BA, and BB, I believe. So, you want to vote on the bulk of the items here with the motion that's on the table? All right. Cast your votes. So, that passes unanimously. Now, is there a motion on BB? This is the one you wanted to vote on separately, Pete?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a motion on BB?
Move that.
Is there a second?
One second.
Okay. Cast your votes. And BB passes unanimously. And how about AR?
On those two, I'm just going to explain. What, these are the two streetcar deals that are basically funding the decision that we made a couple months ago about the new route. I voted against the new route because I didn't want to allocate any more money to the project. And even though I think that the new route makes the project better, I just didn't want to allocate any more money. So, to be consistent, I am voting again, I'll be voting against these two items that allocate the money to it.
Okay. And these are AR and BA?
AR and BA, yes.
All right. Is there a motion then on AR?
So, there's no matter.
All right. We have a motion, a second. Cast your votes. And it passes six to two. And on item BA, is there a motion?
No.
All right. Cast your votes. And it passes six to two.
Is it, is it too late to ask one question about AR? Can I just ask David Todd something?
Well, we've already, I mean, we voted on it, but go ahead and you can ask a question.
Can I ask a question real quick? Can you, can you tell me where we are with the traffic, since we're talking about traffic, traffic prioritization? I know that there's been some debate. Is that part of this contract or is that...
No, we're doing studies right now to find out what equipment is at existing intersections and what it will take to provide the equipment for traffic prioritization. But that isn't the only issue. There's still, you know, the basic traffic fundamentals in there that Public Works is going to help us look at.
So, has a decision been made about whether to prioritize traffic signalization for the streetcar or...
There will be traffic prioritization. We're trying to make sure we hit the right intersection. There probably won't be at all traffic intersections, although we may put in the infrastructure to allow for that in the future. So, we want to maximize the, you know, the balancing between the streetcar.
So, you could, you could put in the infrastructure to do all of them and then test it and turn on whichever ones at whatever time?
Right. We haven't made that decision yet. That's what's being evaluated.
When will that decision be made?
Well, it could be that some of those decisions are made after the streetcar is in service, you know, deciding which intersections are causing problems. That's, which ones do we operate? Whether we put them in, in each box out there, each traffic box, was something that we'll be deciding in the next couple of months.
But will you, will you get cost estimates for how much it would cost to put it on each intersection?
We're working on that right now.
Okay. Okay, great.
Jeff, you want to speak on item AR?
Yes, I think it's...
We'll need your name and address for the record.
Sure. Jeff Bezdek, 1015 North Broadway, Suite 120, in Oklahoma City. I just want to stress that I think it's safe to say that a majority of our subcommittee believes that traffic prioritization is essential to making the streetcar successful and not just on select intersections, but all intersections. This is our first attempt at rail transit. And while I respect our consultants, and I think the majority of the committee respects the designs they've done in other cities, we are expanding their contract with several million dollars this morning, where we have already proved that. But it should be noted that there's been an extraordinary amount of public criticism in some of the cities that they've worked on regarding them meeting their projections for on-time arrival. Our system is very unique. We have batteries. We're lowering and raising the pantograph, which is different than other cities. And we have a lot more twists and turns than a lot of other cities already in operation. Any, I think that, you know, as David mentioned, we could add prioritization equipment after the system is built, but the committee feels, the majority of the committee feels that it's important to have this infrastructure in place as part of the MAPS capital expenditure so that EMBARK or some other entity in the future doesn't have to come up with the added money to install this. But it could also potentially reduce our operations and maintenance costs because we would not need as many trams in theory, or we'd have an improved frequency. There are a lot of factors that go into signal prioritization, including automobile movement, pedestrians, and emergency vehicles. At any time we can give the streetcar a green light at any of the 30, 40-some-odd intersections, the majority of the committee believes that we should. And we will be probably coming to you in the near future asking that that money be allocated. Otherwise, quite frankly, on a personal note, I do not believe the streetcar system will be as successful as we suggested it would be without this sort of technology in place, to be perfectly honest.
All right. Jeff, thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I don't, I mean, we don't give signal prioritization to buses, so I don't know why we would to the streetcar. But, and I'm not advocating for signal prioritization for buses, but, because I, I don't want that either, so.
All right. We're on to the concurrence docket. Any comments from council? Is there a motion on the concurrence?
The items.
All right. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. That puts us on to item nine. These are items that require a separate vote. We begin with a series of zoning cases. We begin with a series of zoning cases. The first is in Ward 1 at 10600 Northwest 21st Street. It's currently R2 medium-low-density residential, and it would be put into a new PUD if approved. James?
Yeah, this is an area that is already zoned R2, and the PUD keeps it R2. It just allows for a 65% lot coverage, but it also adds in the architectural requirements that isn't under R2. And so it got a staff recommendation of approval, AAPC approval, and there's not been any protest. Has anybody signed up to speak? Okay, well, with that, I move for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. If no one else wants to speak on item 9A1, we'll vote. All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9A2 has been deferred until May 31st. Item 9A3 is a zoning case in Ward 2 at 3720 North Penn. It's currently O2 general office and R4 general residential, and it would be put into a new PUD. Ed?
Has anybody signed up to speak? This had unanimous approval, no protest, I move for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on item 9A3. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9A4 is a zoning case in Ward 3 at 5120 South Cimarron Road. It's currently AA agricultural, and it would become a new simplified planning development if passed. Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. Is the applicant present? If y'all would come forward, just in case.
Yeah, come on up.
Has anyone signed up to speak against this? Okay, this is a very unique installation that's planned out here. It's gone through a lot of technical difficulties to get to this point, and no one is here today to protest it. This is in the area of offering something in agriculture, tourism, that is a little bit different than what we normally have in our area. So if you'd like Mr. Horn to give just a very brief overview of what you're planning to do, and then we'll call for a vote.
Well, as you can see, we own the farm around this property, and, you know, we are a working farm. We have a 3,600-foot building that is, it's a barn, but it's not just any barn. It's a nice facility. It has central heat and air. It has handicap bathrooms, a commercial kitchen, and the hall is finished out in wood, chandeliers and stained floors. We'd like to use this for anybody that would like to, you know, rent the place for, you know, that's on a farm, that's for our property. We'd be using it for everything from like birthdays, reunions, anniversaries, weddings. We could, you know, just anything like that that you would like to use it for. We might also have like markets where we sell produce and stuff from our farm in there as well.
Agro-tourism is an interesting component of the economy within the state of Oklahoma that I was not aware of until just several months ago, and this fits into that model. Unless there are some questions from the council, I move for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Good luck.
Thank you all.
All right, we're on item 9A5. It's a zoning case in Ward 1 at 8200 Northwest 10th Street. It's currently R4 general residential, and it would be turned into a new PUD. And James, there's one person that signed up to speak.
Okay. Is it the developer?
I think this is her.
Hi, my name is Yuen Ma Buwi. I am actually here for the rezoning. I was just confused, so I'm not speaking against it.
Right.
Cool, okay, yeah. I think this is a great example of good infill development. You guys have a property just to the northwest of here, right?
Yes.
And so it's expanding your business. It's going to front, it's going to have commercial on the front, right?
Commercial will be for future development, but right now we are pushing for a storage warehouse in the back lot.
In the back part of it.
Yes, sir.
So, yeah, I think it's a good idea. It had a staff approval, planning commission approval, no protest. Move for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on item 9A5. Cast your votes.
Thank you very much.
All right, item 9B is an amendment to a master design statement, and this is in Ward 5. David, have you been keeping up with this?
I have, Your Honor, thank you. And first of all, I want to extend my appreciation to Mr. Johnson and the developers for being patient. This originally came to this council back on April 19th, and mainly due to my schedule, I just wasn't able to get the level of comfort with respect to the development that I felt was necessary, mainly because not the commercial development that's going to take place along 89th Street. These are office buildings. I think it'll be a very nice addition. But it was the conversion from R1 to R2 on the rest of the property that will create what I refer to as duplexes. And Tim, if you could begin to make your way up, I'll try to give some background as to what my concerns were. There's only one gentleman who spoke at the planning commission, and his concern was with respect to the common area. And Tim, Mr. Johnson's got that addressed in the PUD, and so that's fine. No other protests took place. But, you know, now that I'm on here for five years, I unfortunately see an extension of blight starting on 59th Street, continuing to move south. And I was concerned that a neighborhood of duplexes would create an environment that might accelerate that continued southward movement of blight. And so I was able to meet with Mr. Johnson on this. And Tim, could you just kind of give us an overview of the plans?
Yes, sir.
Because it sounds like it's going to be a very nice development.
Tim Johnson with Johnson Associates here on behalf of the applicant. This originally came in the zoning as an R1, but the demographics in the market that the developers have been talking to pushed them towards an R2 zoning district with, and converting it to a gated community for empty nesters that want a place to, that they can live and not have to worry about lawn care. It's all one lawn care user. We've done many projects like this, mostly in the north part of town. There's a project like this in East Edmund called the Porches at the Arbors. And they go up to six units attached, but the same concept, similar to what Teresa had shared earlier. Smaller, high-end units that are set up in such a way that if you leave for a couple of weeks, somebody takes care of your, picking up your mail and things like that. Kind of a concierge concept. And so that's what they're proposing. They're proposing a high finish. We added language to the PUD about the finishes on the units, and we added the requirement for the gated community as well to the documents since planning commission saw it. And so that's the, they're really targeting an owner-occupied facility.
Thank you, Tim. Yes, and it was approved unanimously by the planning commission. Any questions?
Is there anyone here hoping to speak on this item? Okay.
I move approval.
All right, we're voting on item 9B. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let me ask Francis, on item 9B, do we need to vote on the amendment and the ordinance separately? Okay, so I'll take that first motion to be on the amendment. I'll need another motion then on 9B2 for the ordinance. All right, cast your votes, and it passes unanimously. All right, item 9C is a PUD in Ward 7. John, you been keeping up with this?
Thank you, Your Honor. Is the applicant present? Is the applicant present? I had a couple of questions, so I'm going to ask for this to be deferred for two weeks, so I can talk to the applicant.
All right, we have a motion and a second on a deferral on item 9C. Cast your votes. That item is deferred two weeks. Francis, we don't have to vote on a deferral twice, do we, for each one of these items?
No.
Okay. We're on to item 8I, and this is in Ward 7. Is this with the same? Oh, it says I on my. No, I didn't turn the pages correctly. That's the problem. All right, thank you for keeping me in line. Item 9D is another amendment to a master design in Ward 7. John?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is the applicant present? Okay, and I see the protester is present as well. We've been actually trying to get in contact with the applicant, and the protester has been trying to get in contact with the applicant. So I'm going to ask for this to be deferred two weeks to allow time for the couple of protesters and the applicant to get together. But we have reached out to the applicant several times. So I, after the council, if you can go into the office and make sure we have your correct contact information because we called, we also emailed, and we heard nothing back. Well, we went with the information that we had, so if you can, after this, make sure that we have the corrected information. We just went with what was on the application. But we want to ensure that the protesters and you have an opportunity to sit down and talk. So I'm going to ask for this to be deferred for two weeks.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there anything you want to say today? You've come down here. Do you want to speak on this item? Okay. Cast your votes on the deferral. It passes unanimously. Item 9E is an item that would be introduced today, and Eric Winger is going to take us through both E and F.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are actually two items for your consideration this morning, and both are introductions. These are, these are both items to come forward. Actually, you'll see more of this as a part of the Public Works budget presentation next week as we look for additional revenues to help support the services of the department. So if we look at item E, this would be an amendment to the general schedule of fees. We currently serve other city offices and outside agencies with two large rooms at the central maintenance facility. So at Southwest 15th and Portland, we have a training room, and we also have a large auditorium that currently do not charge an hourly rate for their use. So there are a number of city offices, but there's also a number of outside agencies that jointly use that. There's over 200 meetings a year there. There's over 1,300 hours of use annually as well. What we're looking to do is to establish a $40-an-hour usage rate. This would be similar to what's already established for the use of parks, facilities, and also what the metropolitan library system establishes for the use of theirs as well. We're looking to also make sure that, you know, general fund service departments that also are being pulled from this budget wouldn't be charged the fee, but all those that are not part of the city's general fund would. So any questions on that, I'd be happy to answer, but it's $40 an hour for the two main facilities, the two large rooms at our central maintenance facility at 15th and Portland.
All right, and this item is being introduced today. We'll be holding a public hearing on May 31st, and it's currently scheduled for adoption on June 14th. All right, and item F, Eric?
So item F is also an amendment to the general schedule of fees. But this is actually related to our sidewalk replacement program that the city council approved, and we moved forward last year. As a brief update, today, we've actually expended about $86,000 of the $100,000 allocated to that program in just 10 months. So it's been very successful. There's been 88 different locations across the city that sidewalks have been replaced, and so they've been a lot of improvements. But we've received a lot more applications than that. So right now, the process for an application is completely free, and a lot of staff time is spent actually evaluating and putting together those cost proposals. And so what's being requested today, after we look at the cost of the program and what it costs to actually operate, is a $175 application fee moving this program forward. The average cost of the replacement so far has been about $995. So some of the projects are larger and cost more, some are less. Again, this is the 50/50 program funded by the city. But moving forward so that we can make sure that staff time is accounted for, to make sure that we are inclusive of that in the Public Works budget for the next year, this $175 one-time fee is being requested.
Eric, what percentage of requests now are being granted? You know, ones that come through the process and your staff spends time on, how many of those ultimately match up and fund its, our expense?
So let me go back and get that number. I should have been better prepared this morning, but I believe we've received over 150 applications, and about 88 of those have moved forward. But I think it's a little better than 50%. Some are pending still, so we haven't quite approved.
So you are spending a lot of staff time on the effort. I can imagine the staff time that goes into that many.
We can get those numbers for you. Actually, it's part of Eric's budget presentation for next week, so we can make sure we bring them.
I'll make sure I include it there.
Well, it's a tough issue because we want to encourage this, and we want people to, you know, to improve their properties. But at the same time, that's a considerable amount of staff time spent looking at a situation. I can understand why you're trying to look after your department's budget. Eric, Larry?
If I could, Mayor, ask a question of Eric. We have this new program from the general obligation bond program of 2007 to resurface some streets and neighborhoods and to put sidewalks on one side of the street should the neighbors so be inclined.
Yes.
Now, if I'm a neighbor and I put in a sidewalk under that program, then to maintain that sidewalk in the future, I would become eligible for this program right here that we're talking about, which would require me to pay half of the replacement cost, the city picking up the other half, plus, and then I would also pay the administrative fee.
That would be correct, as the program moves forward and has available funds. So I mentioned today that we've expended about $86,000 of the $100,000, so we're coming near to the end of the first $100,000 allocation being expended. But yes, moving forward, a sidewalk that's located on residential property, any new sidewalks the city would construct, if they became damaged or not ADA compliant, would be eligible for a program.
And the balance on that is the responsibility of the property owner as we move forward.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Well, item is just being introduced today, so final decision on council.
Just one quick question. You say that the $100,000 has been allocated, and $86,000 of that has been spent. When you make your budget presentation next week, will there be additional funds allocated for this project?
Yeah, I think that's at the...
Yeah, I think we'll look to come up with dollars. We think it's a good program, and it isn't a lot of money in the overall, and we're not sure whether this pace will increase or slow down. There was some pent-up demand, and we've met that, so we're really a little uncertain how much we'll need in the future, but we'll try to continue to fund it as we go forward.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to be voting on E and F today, and again, they're both being introduced, and a public hearing set for May 31st. So how about a motion, first on item E? All right, cast your votes. That item is introduced. And then item F. Cast your votes. Thank you. All right. Item 9G is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9G? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9H is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9H? Okay, how about a motion? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9I is a public hearing regarding abandoned buildings. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9I? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9J is a public hearing regarding the removal of property from the abandoned buildings list. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any of these items? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9K is a resolution from the trustees of the Oklahoma City Redevelopment Authority, and Kathy O'Connor is here to explain more. Kathy?
Good morning. On the agenda today is a resolution requesting the use of some funds in the Oklahoma City Redevelopment Authority for the potential purchase of land in the Coors Shore area. Just as a little bit of background to this item, in 2010, the city council adopted a resolution that directed the redevelopment authority to place any revenues received from the lease or loan payments from the Skirvin into an economic development fund. There's a report in your packet that details the success of the Skirvin Hotel, and to date, we've accumulated about $7.4 million in that fund. Some of those have been used to repay a Brownfields loan that the city made as a part of the original redevelopment of the Skirvin. Also, in 2010, the city council adopted the Coors Shore Urban Renewal Plan, and that plan was amended in 2014 to designate a certain area in the Coors Shore area as for possible acquisition by the Urban Renewal Authority. All of these sites are around the Maps 3 Park, the Convention Center, and that area has been very important to the redevelopment of downtown. One of the sites has been designated as a potential location for a Convention Center hotel if the city council desires to move forward with that project at some point in the future. The site is at the corner of Southwest 3rd and Robinson, or basically the Oklahoma City Boulevard and Robinson. On the east, it's bounded by Broadway, and on the south, Southwest 4th Street. Again, the site has been designated in some of the planning efforts that have been done so far as a site for a potential hotel, but the site is very important to the development of downtown Oklahoma City. It's adjacent to the Chesapeake Arena. It's across the street from the new Maps 3 Park and across the street from the Convention Center site. The resolution that is before you today requests that the funds from the redevelopment authority in the economic development fund be used to purchase this site and to pay for any of the expenses related to the ongoing due diligence for the development of a Convention Center hotel. Over the next few months, we anticipate bringing forward to you the finalists or finalists in the selection process. You know, we've narrowed it down to four developers, and we'll be asking them for additional information and further refining the proposals and the information that needs to be presented to council so that you can make that decision. So that's what the resolution is asking for today, and I would ask for your consideration.
All right. Yeah, Ed, how much would the due diligence of not just the land purchase, but you referenced the due diligence, how much would that cost?
At this point, I really don't know. I think most of the costs will be related to legal costs to develop the documents and all of the various agreements that will be needed if the council decides to go forward with it. So, you know, some of those costs will be incurred even after the council's made a decision. But up until that point, we need to be able to make sure that the developers have information about what, you know, the terms of the agreement, you know, what, kind of the basic legal structure that we would be looking for. And so there's some legal work that needs to be done. We may need to do some additional market studies. I'm not sure about that yet, but we'd like the ability to be able to update any market studies if the selection committee and the city council thinks that that's a good idea.
Do you have a sense that developers would want the land paid for by the city? I mean, that that would be part of a package?
We don't know that yet.
So we could buy this and then sell it to them, or we could buy it and give it to them?
I, I'm, what we are assuming at this point is that we will buy the land and lease it to them under a long-term ground lease, similar to the way we did the Skirvin, so that we would, we would earn revenues from that ground lease over time.
All right. Any other questions for Kathy? All right. We'll vote on item 9K. Cast your votes, and it passes 9-0. Thanks, Kathy. Item 9L has been struck. It'll be coming back to us. Item 9M, understand we do not need executive session on this item, so just a motion to approve the resolution would be in order. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9N, understand we do not need executive session, so a motion to approve the resolution. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9O, understand we do not need executive session, so a motion to approve. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9P, understand we do not need executive session, so a motion to approve the resolution. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Likewise, on item 9Q, we do need to go into executive session on that item, so how about a motion to move item 9Q to executive session? All right, cast your votes. That item moves into executive session. Item 9R is reflective of a clerical error that was made previously, and instead of paying one person twice, we're going to pay a separate person. So just a motion to approve would be in order. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9S is claims recommended for denial, and I'll note that item S1E has been struck from the agenda, but I'll look for a motion on the rest of the docket. All right, is anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9S? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 10A is claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any of these items? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. And item 10 passes unanimously. Item 11 is items from council. The first item here is to pay the expenses of Councilman McAtee and Pettis to attend the National League of Cities event in Kansas City. Is there a motion here? All right, cast your votes on item 11A, and it passes unanimously. Items from council. James, do you have anything for us? Ed?
I do. I want to, I want to speak to David Boren's education sales tax proposal, and I've been, even I've been somewhat conflict-avoidant about speaking about it, but it looks like it's been certified, and so now it's going to happen. It seems like there needs to be a response from the city of Oklahoma City and the city of Lawton and the city of Tulsa and all the cities. Pete wrote an op-ed piece, but other than that, there really hasn't been a response. I'd look for a response if there's a consensus. I don't think, you know, just putting together like a Maps for Neighborhoods and throwing that out there in three months, if that's being used as a foil, I don't think that that's a good strategy. I think we should look at this proposal on its merits, and why, and I say David Boren because it's all, it's his initiative. He's using his gravitas to get it passed. Without David Boren himself, I don't think we'd be faced with this. So his motives, I think, need to be looked at. Why in the only state in America where cities are reliant on sales tax to this degree, the only state in America where cities can't tap income tax and property tax for their maintenance, would David Boren come forward with complete reliance on a sales tax? No, why wouldn't everything be on the table? I was very proud of the 600 students in my ward Northwest classroom that walked out yesterday, because we're in the middle of a crisis, and they're demanding that the legislature step up to the plate and take responsibility, but with the, why isn't David Boren talking about other options? Why is it all sales tax in this environment? So I don't like to make it about one person, but the fact that he is running this, and it's his gravitas that is putting it on the ballot, basically, I think his motive is, and my thesis is that it's not just about education, is that he's disproportionately asking for money to go to higher education as opposed to common education, which were mandated to serve. But with 50% of the state legislature's budget being education, if he can get some of the, this put on sales tax, it takes pressure off the legislature to then look at other things which are going to come under pressure. They've carved everything to the bone. They took the earned income tax credit last week off. They've done everything they can do for the poor and the lower-middle class. They might have to start looking at corporate tax credits, at corporate welfare. They might have to start looking at the oil and gas industry. And so my thesis is that David Boren is putting this forward, at least partially, to take pressure off some of those, some of those questions. If David Boren was just the head of the University of Oklahoma, that would be one thing, but he's not. He serves on the boards of many corporations and has a duty, I guess, to the shareholders to look out for their interests. He's on the board of American Airlines. He's been on the board of ConocoPhillips, Texas Instruments, Torchmark, Highland, and most controversially, which has got him local and national media criticism, is being on the board for the last seven years of Continental Energy. Last year, I can see 2014, he was paid $406,000 to be on the board of Continental Energy. He's a very smart man. I don't think he knows very much about the day-to-day operations of an oil and gas company. So what does Continental pay David Boren $406,000 a year to serve on that board? I think it's for political influence, and it's, and I think it's for things like this. I think that the emails that were acquired by Energy Wire between Harold Hamm and David Boren are so damning that there's no other public official that would survive that level of conflict of interest. What was revealed in those emails is so disturbing and rises to such a high level of ethical breach and conflict of interest. I just don't think there's any other public official that would survive those emails. And you could, it was by Energy Wire, it's a national wire. But it's very clear that David Boren, in an institution that houses the Oklahoma Geological Society, who's tasked with studying whether oil and gas fracking and disposal well is related to earthquakes, that they were working together to shield the people of Oklahoma City and that industry. When the New York Times came out and started linking them and talked about Oklahoma scientists eyeing oil and gas industry, Harold Hamm wrote to David Boren, "I'm glad you put Catherine Bishop in charge. The situation could spiral out of hand easily." He then wrote later, "I think it's obvious from this, we have the wrong guy delivering the media message. Austin and Randy are begging for a buffer with the media. They're good scientists, they just aren't well-equipped to deal with the pressure. Catherine is a seasoned veteran with the media who could clearly articulate the great research you guys are doing." David Boren is calling in, Austin Holland into his office, the scientist with the Oklahoma Geological Society, and there's sitting Harold Hamm and David Boren. There's a level of intimidation there that resulted in a conclusion that, overall, the majority of the recent earthquakes appear to be the result of natural stresses, since they're consistent with the regional Oklahoma natural stress field. Not enough energy is being added into the system through fluid disposal to materially change the natural stresses. At the same time, that was a conclusion, David Boren, they were asking Harold Hamm for 25 million for a donation. Once that fizzled out, they completely reversed course and came to the conclusion that the disposal wells were related to earthquakes. The point is that I believe David Boren put the integrity of the research at Oklahoma and the health and safety of the citizens of Oklahoma. He sacrificed that in terms of corporate profits and shielding the oil and gas industry. And if he's willing to go to that length of ethical breach, then he's certainly willing to float a proposal like this, and at least partially, part of the motivation be to shield, to take the pressure off the legislature looking at the 2% production tax, or looking at the shielding those wells that aren't profitable, or looking at the corporate welfare that's going on in the legislature. And so that's certainly worthy of a question. So I just asked David Boren to explain to us, if that's not the case, explain to us why it's all about sales tax in the only state in America where cities are reliant, cannot access income tax or property tax. Why do you choose only sales tax? Why isn't everything on the table in the middle of this crisis? A friend of someone on the board indicated that last week he threatened to resign. I think he should have resigned after all this Energy Wire. I think there's already enough that he should have resigned. So I don't, I'd ask him to resign based on what he's already done. But if he stays and he's not willing to resign his $406,000 position at Continental and all these other corporations, explain to us how that's not influencing your decision to put all the eggs in one sales tax basket in this dynamic. And he should be able to answer that for us publicly. He should be able to explain why he's put all his gravitas into sales tax, which he should know, and we know, is a regressive tax. The poor are getting hammered in this state. Explain to us why you choose a regressive tax when, I think we all know that the legislature, as soon as it's passed, is going to shield. You raise 600 million, the legislature just moves 200 million out of the education budget. You're not going to get the amount of money that you're proposing. He should answer these questions publicly, and we should, this debate starts, should start now, obviously. I mean, we're six months away. It's going to severely impact the city of Oklahoma City and all the cities out through America, through Oklahoma. I think we have to have an open discussion about it right now, and he, because he's put all of his behind this, he should answer these questions publicly. Thanks.
I'm not here to defend anybody, and I'm not here to support the sales tax initiative, but I think there are many, many people that will take exception about what you said about President Boren and what you said about Harold Hamm, with all due respect, sir.
Larry?
Yeah, just what I really want to brief you all on is something, a couple of things that are going on in Ward 3, but I think it might be, well, to just refresh everybody's memory, that the city of Oklahoma City, through the city council a number of years ago, did allocate a one-cent sales tax called Maps for Kids to help our city schools and their infrastructure needs. So as this debate goes forward, we have been on record as supporting the public schools through that one-cent sales tax, Maps for Kids. With that being said, I'd like to congratulate Linda Palmer and the folks at Hilldale for their neighborhood meeting in the last couple of weeks, where they discussed whether or not they wanted sidewalks as part of their community, being funded by the 2007 bond program, which has identified that neighborhood as a neighborhood receiving resurfacing. And it was a very good discussion. They looked at the pros and cons. They evaluated certain areas within the neighborhood and came up with a recommendation to Public Works on how to implement sidewalks where it made sense. And I'd encourage other neighborhoods who are looking for the resurfacing still to go on from the 2007 program to kind of follow their lead in this, because it was a very well-handled discussion. With that being said, the two neighborhoods have meetings in Ward 3 the rest of this week, Windsor Forest and Windsor Oaks, and I look forward to visiting with those neighbors later on this week. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right. Pete?
With regard to the one-cent sales tax for education, it seems like it's, these kind of issues always somehow are able to get the high ground, right? They get a name for themselves, like this is taxes for education. I think the people of Oklahoma have been very supportive of education, but people have been supportive. Pot County passed a county-wide penny to try to help Pot County schools. We did Math for Kids. I mean, I think it's, I think the people are supportive. It's a shame that the legislature is unwilling to follow that support. It's sad. I have some serious problems about the penny for, I think it is heavily weighted toward higher education, and I think it's the wrong vehicle. But the way, we've got to find a way to defeat it. We've got to get a message that is, you know, I have some very, very close friends that are heavily involved in education, and one of the things they say to me is, "Well, is it more important that the city have the penny, or is it more important we educate the kids of the state of Oklahoma?" That's a hard question to answer. That's hard. But the bottom line is not, that shouldn't be the choice. The choice should be, these people that put us in this thing are all running for reelection in November, and we ought to get out and stop it. We've got to change. We have to make change, dramatic change at the legislature, and get people in there that reflect the will of the people. The will of the people is to support education. There's issue after issue after issue, poll after poll after poll, that says they are, and now they're preying on that. They're preying on that as opposed to doing their job. They're preying on the fact that the people of the state of Oklahoma care about public education. And I think we've got, I'm, that's a very political statement to talk about beating them, and I understand that, and we haven't, traditionally, that's not something we've done from this horse ship. But this is a crisis. This is, we've gone way past being genteel about this. This is, this is serious. I mean, and we can't let this happen. We cannot. I, part of what Ed said, I agree with completely. They have attacked every, everything for the poor in the state of Oklahoma has been attacked. The earned income credit is being attacked, and we're given a cross-the-board tax cut, tax cut, basically that benefits only the wealthy. I mean, the logic of it is just beyond me. Without, without free public education, this country is in sad, sad shape, and we need to elect people to the legislature that believe that.
All right, David?
Thank you, Your Honor. Jim, I think you're going to discuss the activities Friday morning about biking up here.
I can.
Oh, well, I thought we had a presentation in your report.
I'll just mention real quick. Bike to work is Friday.
Yeah, Friday is Bike to Work, so I hope everybody does that, and I'm going to try for the first time to do a combination of riding the bus most of the way and then biking the remainder of the way. And I have to bike from my home to the bus stop, so that's a couple of miles. But there's activities planned for several different parks as the congregation area for... where people will meet up at, I guess, and then from those parks, including Wiley Post in South Oklahoma City, will ride their bikes over to the Myriad and try to shut down, I guess, all traffic or something like that. Jim?
That's not the goal.
Okay. I'm kidding. I'm kidding. But I do think, one, we'll have good weather. It's not supposed to rain on Friday, so I encourage everybody to at least attempt this. And those who have the ability to carry their bike on their automobile, you know, I guess that's okay, too, to drive down here and then ride your bike over to the activities. And around 7:30, there's going to be at least coffee, maybe even breakfast, at the Myriad Gardens for those who want to participate. So just wanted to invite everybody to take advantage of that. But also, just to follow up on Councilman Shadid's comment, I, too, would like to compliment the students, I believe, at three high schools yesterday in the Oklahoma City Public Schools, who, in a nonviolent manner, protested the proposed budget cuts for common education. I hope this creates an interest in them and that they will, you know, become better educated, more informed about these issues, not just as it relates to state operations and fundings for education, but our political process in total. You know, in general, there's, there's a perception that people have gotten away from being informed and not knowledgeable. And I do think, following up on Councilman White's comments, it's up to the citizens to direct how this state is going to move forward. And I am going to be critical. I think we've allowed ourselves to be not well-informed with the people who are running for state office and unfortunately have elected some people who don't either have the education background or the business experience to truly run and manage the state's operations. That's what we need as citizens to evaluate when we elect people. Do they have the experience or education background to properly manage an operation like the state of Oklahoma? Look to the state of Texas. They never have funding problems for their education process. I was out in Tennessee last week visiting my son. We were talking, "Why don't you have problems like we're experiencing in Oklahoma?" They do not have an individual income tax. They don't have much in the way of a corporate income tax. Their sales tax is similar to ours, I think, a little less. And their real estate taxes are equal to or less than ours. I don't know. I need to study that. But there are states that are performing quite well. And you can't say, I mean, it just isn't obvious why they don't have problems and we are experiencing problems. So I would call for some kind of a joint effort with all municipalities and hopefully with the state to work with us, to form a task force to really evaluate, how do other states generate revenue to support the basic functions, education, healthcare, all these requirements, transportation, the infrastructure? Why do we have such problems and other states don't? And I'm not going to jump on the bandwagon and say it's only due to the oil and gas industry. Tennessee doesn't have any oil and gas activities. They don't have much in the way of hard industry out there in Tennessee. So why can they be so successful, especially with a lot of the traditional sources of revenue being equal to or less than ours? It's hard to comprehend. But we can certainly come to that conclusion and find out why they are successful and unfortunately we are not. But I think it's going to require, just like these students began yesterday, the municipalities to come together and call on the state to put together a task force that does not exclude municipalities, because they will be very tempted, I'm afraid, to look at it solely at the state level. And we are so limited by our sources of revenue, it would actually hurt us unless we have proper municipal participation in that task force. And we can't wait until next fall, next winter. This needs to be done immediately. And I'm critical of the state's operations, because this was, we saw signals well over a year ago, and they're acting like, "Oh, where did this shortfall come from?" In fact, I was at a presentation sponsored by Oklahoma Watch a few months ago, and I'm going to say what happened. It was a discussion between House Speaker Hickman and Minority Leader Enman. And Speaker Hickman said, "We don't have a revenue problem. We've got a spending problem." No, you've got a combination of a big problem, and you're just not willing to show the courage to say, "You know what? We may have to look at all sources of revenue, real estate taxes, income taxes, possibly sales tax, but I hope not," and do it in a, you know, an informed manner. I'm just afraid there's a lot of people who've been elected at the state level who have no business background, very little education. How can they make good decisions? Thank you.
Meg?
Yeah, quickly, a couple of things. Congratulations on the roundtable. Thought it was great. Mayor Florville did a super job. He's gotten rave reviews. And the discussion about Google Cars was really interesting. I hope we don't have to put Steph Curry in one. That was a great idea. But I thought it was a terrific program. And ULI put on a great program last night. I feel like we're all back at the state level, but really excellent presentation about historic tax credits and their value, and since we have so many projects in Oklahoma City that have availed themselves of that, the returns are essentially 12 to 1. For every dollar provided in a historic, state historic tax credit, the state receives $10, $12 back in value for that. And it was a terrific presentation. If anybody wants it, ULI has it and will make it available.
All right. John?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Earlier in the council meeting, I had asked for, I believe, 9D1 and 2 to be deferred, and I've been informed that the applicant and protester were able to work things out. And so I am going to actually ask to rescind that motion and ask the council to reconsider the motion. And Kenny, help me make sure I'm doing this correct.
That's correct.
Make a motion on item 9D1.
All right. So I move to reconsider. Reconsider 9D1 and 2.
All right. And we'll take the motion. We'll have to vote on them separately. So item 9D1, there's a motion and a second. Cast your votes. That item passes. And now if you'll make a motion on item 9D2.
I move for approval.
All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
All right.
And congratulations on getting that done so quickly.
Thank you to the applicant and protesters. Thank you.
Rarely does that happen.
I do want.
Hey, Ed, you want to reconsider?
In sad news, last week, we lost Dr. Dennis Portis. He was the Associate Superintendent of Metro Tech Technology Center. Matter of fact, a few weeks ago, he gave a presentation, Metro Tech's presentation on the TIF. And on last, last week, he did pass, and his funeral was this past Saturday. Very well-attended. He definitely will be missed. I grew up with Dr. Portis. He actually was the one who taught me how to play the tuba when I was in the fifth grade. So he definitely will be missed, and his legacy will stand long for the community and also Metro Tech. Thank you.
Mark?
Just briefly, we, Mayor, we have a workshop coming up in Ward Eight. It's in conjunction with the Parks Department, and it's to take a look at our parks in Ward Eight and the capital improvements that should be considered possibly for those Ward Eight parks. It's May the 26th, which is about nine days away. It's, that's on a Thursday evening from 6:00 until 8:00 p.m. at Church of the Servant. And we'd love to have a large turnout. And I'd also like to say I enjoyed the roundtable presentation. That always gives you a lot of new creative ideas, and I really enjoyed it.
Okay. Thanks. Steve Banjo reports.
We have a presentation this morning on active transportation planning initiative, and I think Aubrey Hamontry is going to introduce it.
Good morning, Aubrey Hamontry, Planning Director. We're going to provide an update to you today on some of our city's active transportation initiatives. So with that, we're talking about our first comprehensive citywide bicycle and pedestrian master plan. It's called Bike-Walk OKC. We'll give you an update on that project. We're kind of concluding our public input process and starting to work on finalization of a draft plan. We're also going to update you on a Federal Highway Administration Safety Grant that we received. It's called Watch for Me OKC. It's a multimodal safety campaign, but it also includes some funds to construct some demonstration bicycle facilities around the city. And we're very excited about the timing of receiving this grant, because we have a bicycle pedestrian master plan that we'll be able to implement some of those things with these grant funds. With that, we're going to hand off to the presentation to two of the planners that have been working on this project. I don't know if you've met them before, but today we'll be presenting Matt Sandage. He is our Transportation Senior Planner with the Planning Department, and John Tankard, who's an architect and planner in training and education. And he also has a passion for walkability and for public health. And I also see Dennis Blind joined us. And Dennis was our former division manager that put his heart and soul into the Bike-Walk program. So we're happy that he came to support these two staff members. So with that, I'll turn it over to Matt and John.
Good morning. As Aubrey said, my name is Matt Sandage. I'm with the Planning Department. I'm here with my colleague, John Tankard, to give you an update on Bike-Walk OKC and Watch for Me OKC. So with Bike-Walk, we're going to assess the process and the preliminary results. And Watch for Me, we're going to go over our activities that we've conducted so far. So with the newly adopted Plan OKC, one of the recommendations was to create a bicycle and pedestrian master plan for the city. So this is the first-ever bicycle and pedestrian master plan. It is an update of the 97 Trails Master Plan and also an update of the 2008 Bicycle Transportation Plan. Since it is a component of Plan OKC, we leaned heavily on Plan OKC to guide us with the goals of the plan. So those goals are, goals are that Oklahoma City has a transportation system that is safe, convenient, and provides a variety of transportation modes. So these could be by automobile, public transportation, bicycle, or pedestrian mobility. The bicycle is used as a form of transportation for users of all experience levels. And also that Oklahoma City has a complete, connected, and comprehensive network of sidewalks. We began in May 2015 with our project with Bike-Walk. We kicked it off with a steering committee meeting. This was followed by several months of public outreach, research and analysis, and now we are in the document preparation stage. The steering committee consisted of internal and external representatives. Internally, we worked very closely with Public Works. We worked with the Parks and Recreation Department. We also worked with COTBA. Externally, we worked with the Oklahoma Department of Transportation, Neighborhood Alliance, Oklahoma City Community Foundation, and also the Association of Central Oklahoma Governments and a variety of other members. I mentioned earlier, we leaned heavily on Plan OKC for plan development. We went back to all of our adopted plans and our adopted policies that were related to bicycle and pedestrian mobility. We combined several of those policies into a master list. We added some to it. We have about 40 policies that were used to inspire plan development and will also be used to implement the plan. We're going to go through five of those policies today. The first one is to incorporate proposed bicycle facilities on roadways being constructed, reconstructed, resurfaced, or restriped. So this is essentially the most efficient and cost-effective way to incorporate bicycle infrastructure, especially if it only requires striping. So when a road is restriped, we recommend that if it is on our bicycle network map, that the bicycle lane also be added at the same time. Second policy is to work on education and encouragement programs with schools and other organizations. I'll get into more detail on Watch for Me here in a little bit, but we have been reaching out to, we've been talking to at health fairs and Boy Scout troops, and we'll be working with the YMCA over the summer. Encourage development of alternative transportation programs for employees. So just as the city of Oklahoma City has an incentive to, you can have a parking pass or you can have a bus pass, this is something that we want to recommend and encourage other employers to do. And at this time, I'd like to make a plug for Bike to Work Day. It's this Friday. Councilman Greenwell already mentioned it, but we'll have five organized rides coming downtown. So that is Friday. Also, improve and maintain enforcement, education, and bicycle safety programs. We've engaged the police department with our Watch for Me campaign, and we will continue to work with the police department on the education piece. They have the opportunity on a daily basis to interact with pedestrians and cyclists and motorists to educate on basically the rules of the road. Also, setting service goals and standards to improve performance of facilities. We have to know how our systems are doing, how our trails are performing. So we are planning to purchase bicycle and pedestrian counters with our Watch for Me OKC grant money, so that we can determine where people are riding, how many people are riding, and then we can, in turn, use that data as leverage for future federal grants.
And I'll take over now. So during the Bike-Walk OKC process you saw on the timeline, we had a significant period of public outreach. And with that, we went to many different locations around the city and tabled, whether it was at an existing event or something we put on ourselves. And we took that opportunity to get people to take our survey for the, for the plan. And we had more than 1,700 responses, which was a significant response. And we took the opportunity to educate people on existing conditions with regard to our pedestrian network and our bicycle network. And this map shows by level of intensity of the color green how many people from each ZIP code responded to our survey. And as I said, we had over 1,700 people around the city, and we had representation from just about everywhere. And from those, the results of that survey, there were some kind of key points, and I'll just go through a couple of those. First of which is that, as of the day that we took the survey, and the people who were surveyed, they said that, or we had less than 10% say that they were satisfied with the current state of our walking infrastructure and our bicycling infrastructure. However, kind of inverse of that, 90% of them felt that it was something that was important or very important. And so some of the reasons that they felt that conditions were not satisfactory, they kind of center in on two issues, one being interaction with motor vehicles, whether that's heavy traffic or aggressive motorists, but then also the infrastructure itself. Does it exist? If it does exist, is it maintained? And when you have to cross that traffic, is it safe?
Was that, was that reasons for not walking or cycling recreationally or to actually get to work?
We did not distinguish that. We just asked in general. Now I'll talk about the pedestrian planning side of Bike-Walk OKC. And just to, the photos emphasize the need to plan for people of all different lifestyles, different abilities, people with disabilities needing to use a wheelchair or visually disabled citizens. And so in order to do pedestrian planning for a city the size of Oklahoma City, 600 square miles is a lot to be able to say, "We need a project right here." So we did a lot of digital analysis, starting at the large scale with the wealth of data that we have at the city, and worked our way down from that, prioritizing locations and going down into the field to make recommendations on the small scale. We use these priorities to help us with our planning efforts, and these come directly from the capital improvements section of Plan OKC. The first one being responsive populations, in this case, people who are likely to be pedestrians, people who don't have access to a motor vehicle, have a disability, or may choose not to, not to drive. We also wanted to look at connecting schools and parks with, to the neighborhoods that surround them, and taking advantage of existing networks, finding gaps, so that we can have the best return on our investment. And through all that, that will help to revitalize neighborhoods as well as urban commercial districts. So this map shows all of the intersections in Oklahoma City. It's more than 25,000 intersections. And what you're seeing in this map is the combination of analysis of what pedestrian -- amenities exist at the intersections today. So we have data on crosswalks. Do sidewalks enter the intersection? Signalization. But then we also compared all the intersections to land use to see what land uses might generate pedestrian activity in the city. And so that's going to be things like schools and grocery stores, parks, trails, and several other things. And so what this allowed us to do is find areas that are the highest priority in terms of the improvements they need and the benefit it will have to the surrounding community. Within these areas of prioritization, we thought about our improvement recommendations for sidewalks in a two-phase process. So the first phase being prioritizing the major roads, the places where the land uses that generate pedestrian activity exist today. These often line up with transit routes, and so we wanted to prioritize those. And then Phase Two would be to connect the surrounding neighborhoods to those main roads. You might think of Phase One as kind of a geo-bond-ready package of projects where Phase Two may be something, a future bond or a future map, something like that. And here's a diagram to kind of illustrate what I was just talking about. So this is kind of anywhere in the inner loop Oklahoma City. So imagine like southwest 29th and Western. And Phase One sidewalks would go on the primary corridors, and Phase Two sidewalks would be to connect the neighborhoods to these primary corridors in a strategic way that creates a network. Similarly, for the intersections, we want to, we wanted to approach this in a phasing approach, looking at first at places that are of high importance that may be underperforming today, and then also anywhere we put Phase One sidewalks. And so this diagram shows that. The red dot represents a place that would be a Phase One improvement. The green dots represent Phase Two intersection improvement. So that's the logic of our prioritization. And for intersection improvements, that may be something like putting in ADA ramps and crosswalks, or cutting through a median that's forcing people in wheelchairs to have to go into the intersection presently. That also might be adding push buttons for pedestrians at a full-stop intersection or recommending a full signalized intersection in key areas that we want to make walkable.
Okay, so transitioning to the bicycle planning component. John discussed pedestrian planning in small areas, small walkable areas. Bicycle planning is somewhat different because cyclists are more inclined to ride multiple miles at a time. So we worked with our steering committee meeting, with our steering committee on an activity that essentially took their advice to, they are experts in their field, and basically, they told us where they wanted to see facilities, where they currently rode, intersections they have trouble with, maybe crossing the river, it may be crossing I-240. There were things that came out of this activity that basically set up themes for our planning process. So connecting existing resources was one of the themes that came out of it. Connecting lake to lake, or trail to lake, or neighborhood to trail, those are things that came up time and time again. Crossing barriers, as I mentioned, crossing I-240, crossing I-44. Those are things that people have trouble with currently when riding a bike. Providing a mix of transportation and recreational facilities and dual-purpose facilities. We have coming up the I-44 Trail, which will be a dual-purpose facility. It will be a recreational trail, but it also will provide an opportunity for people to ride from their neighborhood to downtown or commercial area.
Can I ask you a question real quick? Can you go back two slides? One more. In the upper left-hand corner, what are those, what are those things in the street? Are they flexible or are they?
They are flexible. They are vertical delineators that essentially delineate the bicycle lane from the automobile lane.
So if a car hit them, they would just pull over?
Right. It'll make a noise, and, but it won't hurt the car. They make a scuff. They'll be discouraged to hit it, essentially.
They use those a lot in Colorado, especially around parks.
So have we looked at different vertical?
We have.
Okay, thanks.
And I have a little bit more on that here in a second. Okay, so since Bicycle, since Bike Walk OKC is an update of the 97 Trails Master Plan, we leaned heavily on it to see what had been planned in 1997 and what had already been constructed. Now, in my book, the 97 Trails Master Plan was a very successful plan. If you look at it, you can tell that, you can see that many of the alignments planned have been constructed. We looked at this map and found some gaps, the areas where we might want to add trails. We found alignments that didn't seem as high of priority in our outreach and with work with our steering committee. We also are proposing to modify some of the previously planned routes to pick up additional neighborhoods and residential areas. Also, we're proposing to reclassify some of the previously planned trails to take them from a separate trail to an on-street bicycle facility. We conducted a bicycle suitability analysis, and this basically tells us what type of facility is appropriate where. This incorporated roadway speeds, the number of lanes, the volume of traffic, and whether or not there is a current bicycle facility present. The blue colors, the blue alignments are the roadways with high suitability. The red are the lowest suitability locations. The, as you can see, the red lines, many of them are the interstates, and it's illegal to ride on the interstates. But you can also see that section-lined roads and major arterials show up as red. Basically, what that tells us, if there is a desire to have an on-street bicycle facility on a major arterial or section-lined road, that shows up in red here, that it will require a higher degree of attention and a higher degree of investment to ensure safety. The types of facilities that we are looking at are bicycle routes. We currently have multiple miles of these. These share the lane with automobiles. And because of that, within an urban setting, we are suggesting they go on streets with a speed limit of 25 miles per hour or less. In a rural setting where 25 miles per hour is not reasonable, we suggest that as the road is reconstructed in the future, that a shoulder be strongly considered. We're proposing more bicycle lanes. We currently have about seven miles of these. This is a dedicated space for the cyclist and is four to eight feet wide. We're proposing protected bicycle lanes. These have the vertical delineators that separate the cyclists from automobiles. These are typically five to 12 feet wide. And the vertical delineators provide additional safety and also the perception of safety. We have additional multi-use trails. These are 10 to 12 feet wide, completely separate from automobiles and also the safest facility. These also require the highest degree of investment. So this is our existing on-street bicycle network. The purple lines are bicycle routes. The orange lines are bicycle lanes. When you add in the multi-use trails, the picture becomes a little more complete. You start to have a more complete network. The proposed new facilities are on the map now. The orange are the bike lanes, purple bike routes, green multi-use trails, and the red are the proposed protected bike lanes. So the idea in creating this network is that any user, no matter what the experience level, could ride from one part of the community to the other part of the community on a multi-use trail or a protected bicycle facility, or where they have to ride on a bicycle route or bicycle lane that's not protected, it would only be in short stretches.
Excuse me. Do we have any kind of an estimated cost to get to this point?
We have some preliminary estimates on this, and the estimates that we are using for, say, a protected bicycle lane is about $80,000 per mile.
I meant kind of in total?
A total?
Yeah.
I don't have that with me today.
That's fine.
But we have been costing that out.
How much a mile?
Yes.
How much a mile?
Eighty or eight? Eighty.
Yes.
So with the proposed new bicycle facilities overlay on top of the existing, this is the complete proposed bicycle network. Now, all of the new bicycle facilities proposed are not necessarily new alignments. We're taking existing alignments and upgrading the existing facilities. Now, we can't forget about the intersections. When a bicycle, a road with a bicycle lane meets, intersects with another road with a bicycle route or bicycle lane, we are proposing that on the left-hand side of your screen, you'll see what we call the bike box. This allows for the cyclist to queue to the front of the line and make a safe left-hand turn onto the intersecting street. On the right-hand side of the screen, you'll see we're proposing parallel lines that guide cyclists across the street. This is where we don't want to encourage cyclists to turn onto the intersecting street. This would be, for example, as an example, Independence Avenue and Northwest Expressway. We don't want to encourage cyclists to turn on the Northwest Expressway because there's not a bicycle facility on that, on that street. So now, we're moving into Watch For Me OKC. This is our multimodal transportation safety campaign. This is funded by Federal Highway Administration Safety Grant, and the first grant is around $400,000, just over $400,000 is the federal share, and we have the opportunity to incorporate an additional grant and uses for the same purpose, which is around $360,000. We've been doing quite a lot of promotional activities with this, with this project. We have been, as I mentioned earlier, participating in health fairs. We've been to the Transit Center for their health fair. We've been advertising on the buses, on the Spokys bikes. We've given out safety lights so that kids or cyclists or walkers can use them in the evening or early in the morning when they're out, so they'll be visible. We've given out tens of thousands of brochures, Watch For Me OKC brochures. They have the rules of the road. These are tips for safe walking, safe cycling, safe driving, and also have links to the laws, associated laws. We also have a radio campaign associated with this, and the radio ads are airing as we speak, actually. We have data collection and evaluation as a component of Watch For Me. This includes the acquisition of bicycle and pedestrian counters. We plan to put these on the Katy Trail, Lake Hefner Trail, and the I-44 Trail after it is constructed. And then Aubrey mentioned earlier, the demonstration corridors. This is education through implementation. The magenta or pink lines are funded by the Federal Highway Administration. As you can see at the southern portion of this map, there's what we're calling the downtown loop. This is sort of the anchor of the demonstration corridors. This provides a circulator for cyclists to use to get around downtown. We are also providing links to this downtown loop as part of the demonstration corridor program. And this is a, just a snapshot of what it might look like, certain parts of it. These are the protected bike lanes on either side of the road, and then we have some green conflict paint at one of the intersections.
Is that, the $80,000 a mile is for the protected?
Yes. And that is all we have for you today.
Thank you, Matt. Any comments or questions from staff?
Matt, I think we'd love to see a cost estimate on, you know, the long-term implementation, what sort of federal funds we might be able to expect long-term, and, you know, some sort of a funding plan that we might be able to consider.
Okay, certainly.
Okay, sure. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
We also have a city manager's report on the Scrivern Hotel update on financial side. I think we kind of covered that earlier in the agenda, so I'd be happy to answer any questions, but it did exceed our original projections. I remember saying through another meeting with Mr. Matt, going through those projections and whether we'd meet him or not. It was a good process.
All right, sentences to be heard, Joe Serge Nelson.
Joe Serge Nelson, and I'm here on a little more pleasant note today. Well, it began Sunday in the Oklahoman, front-page stuff. And we're supposed to went yesterday, today, and Wednesday to kind of make up a little volume, to make a complete set. It's not news anymore. We all heard it every day and followed the court trial, all the way to the verdict's end. Needless to say, people got hurt in that trial, mostly women. But equally important as well, were the people who wore that badge. Do not misunderstand me. That badge honestly represents the law, today and it's still the same. So remember this: honor that badge. Respect who and what it represents. But most importantly, who wears it? Sure, it's bad when one of your own goes rogue, but what's important is that because of that badge and those who wear it fall into a dangerous light. And it's that light called honor. It shines far brighter to those than we'll ever know it or see it. And remember, it's not something that just comes and goes to them. Taking down one of your own is extremely hard. They all took it the same training, they used the same tools to learn with, they suffered the hardships to get to wear that badge. And when someone dishonors it, it's like a huge tidal wave. It hits all those select numbers harder in places than you and I will ever even come close to imagining. That hurt carries a shame, an inner emotional dishonor that touches every officer, whatever his rank. Each has to wear it inside and out. Were us, we're the ordinary people. We don't have to. We just accept, make sneers and remarks and such. And it's a true story all across this nation, but when it's home, each and every one of the officers have to carry that same guilt for all of the wrong that just one person did in their ranks. It's a heavy and harsh burden. It's time we, meaning us people, understand that there's a piece of metal to us, but behind it is a piece of flesh, and that flesh is a person. A person who believes in that badge, believes in it so much that everything that officer does, for most part, believes in the families, the children, the homes, the jobs, the business, churches, the flag, and God. They put all that on a uniform and a badge and a gun and step out the door and get in a patrol car and begin to do their job. It's also true that thanking an officer is all but a forgotten myth. It's just an expected trade. Well, since when does doing your job wearing a badge and dying become a trade? Instead, I say, why not just say thank you to those in that uniform for doing their job? In fact, many have already served in the armed forces. They've already known and believed that being a police officer is important, but honorable. And protecting is more than just serving. It has a purpose. It's a goal. To those who've served after many years of looking out for the other person, already knowing carry that inner peace that walks in their shoes. When that inner peace is challenged or threatened, those few selecting the proud will tear down that wall, bend that steel, and do whatever it takes to rebuild and straighten out whatever's wrong to make it right again, and do it right before your very eyes. Our trust in them means everything. That black and white, sometimes unmarked cars, they're not there to scare you. It's to keep you safe and protect us. It's not a foolproof system, but it's all we have, and for the most part, it works. Even if it has to take down one of its own, courage, honor, respect, and service, that's what that badge and that uniform represents. And what's in it, that's what makes it real and come to life. Every family has a tragedy at one time or another, and those in a law enforcement uniform are not an exception. Each and every one of them band together, and together they patch over the hurt and its pain and try to console each other and remind each other that the job they do does in some track, and in not many way, in most ways, helps them all as well. When they're helping you, and on that note, I'll close again with this in a reminder. It's what is in that uniform that makes it real and makes it come to life. Police. My friends. My friends are there for you in a variety of uniforms and without any doubt will put their lives on the line every time before yours. It's not just the job to them. It's their honor, their courage, and sacrifice to show you they honestly do care. I'm one who does not care much for the written show in the front page of the newspaper. It displays to me and shows how not to get caught. While in the act of wrongdoing, why not let the bad rest and let the police stop suffering for the acts of only one? 12,000, 1,200-plus here in Oklahoma City carrying that cross when only one dropped it. Thank you for having me.
Thanks, Joe. All right, we have executive session. We'll be back.